Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Alfano?
Thank you, Mr. Roman Gino. Just a quick statement if I may. New Jersey opened the public school door with an act that controls the right to public notice and up to attend the meeting of public bodies of which any business that may be their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of this act, because our Board of Ed has caused notice of this meeting and published by having the date, time, and place, they are posted in the offices of the Borough Club, of the Library, Borough Rectory, the office of the Board of Ed, and the offices of schools number three, four, five, and six in the high school on August 16th of 2022, and notices before to record this, direct this. This is official. May I take the roll if I may, Mr. Roman Gino? Mrs. Agro?
Here.
Mr. Capano?
Here.
Mrs. Fredo?
Mr. Persson?
Here.
Mr. Nidro?
Here.
Dr. Pacquiao?
Here.
Mr. Shelly?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Yuniz? Okay, Mr. Roman Gino.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Alfano. Mr. Russo? Did you call Mr. Russo?
I apologize. I just checked you, Mr. Russo. Yeah, Mr. Russo?
Here.
Sorry about that.
Do a manual on that one.
Yeah, I was on auto file. Okay, Mr. Roman Gino.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Alfano. I would like to take this opportunity to welcome everyone to our meeting tonight. This is our first open board meeting since we opened school on September 8th for students. So I do want to take this opportunity to thank all of our faculty members, staff members, administration for a very smooth opening of school in September. And so far since that time, things have been going very, very well. As Mr. Alfano is going to mention later, we are finishing up some construction projects, which should be finishing up within the next week or two. And the schools, I want to thank our custodians for the work that they did over the summer, getting our schools in great shape. So thanks to everyone. For parents and staff and students, you are well aware that I did post the updated COVID guidelines to the website. As you know, we still have some cases of COVID intermittently throughout the schools, staff and students. Right now, the guidelines are that if someone is positive, they stay home for five days. They can come back on the sixth day with no symptoms. And as per CDC guidelines and the local borough guidelines from our borough nurse, there is no quarantining of students and staff members if they come in contact with COVID. We hope as the year goes on, we experience less and less cases. And as I mentioned before, I think at our last August meeting, we're looking forward to be getting back to normalcy as far as school is concerned. I want to thank our principals and our parents who have come out so far to our parent visitation evenings. Actually, tonight, our middle school has parent visitation. The last one after the middle school will be our high school. We moved that to October 13th so that it would give us some time to finish up some of the construction projects that are taking place at the high school. But I do want to thank our parents for coming out. We've had a good turnout from parents at our last couple of elementary back-to-school nights. I do want to make mention that our guidance departments across the district are celebrating a couple of different events that occurred during the months of October. This month, September, is Suicide Prevention Month. And I know our counselors are addressing that topic with students and with staff and running some programs. Also, as we do each year, we'll be celebrating Respect Week, the week of October 3rd, and also School Violence Awareness Week, the week of October 17th through 21st. So our elementary counselors, I want to thank Mrs. Arp for getting some information out. Our middle school counselor and our high school counselors will be offering some programs for students and staff that relate to these specific programs. I have in your folder tonight a little spreadsheet of our current enrollment. At this time, we are, we have 3,147 students. We're up about 25 students from June. If you look at the bottom of the sheet, you don't have to do this now, but when you have time, you can look it over. In 2019, 20, we were at our highest of 3319. So from that number, we have dropped off somewhat. And I think that's due to COVID because that was when COVID broke out. And I think we did lose students during that two-year period. And I think little, by little, we're going to gain those students back. And I think our number now at 3,150, just about, will probably creep up as the year goes on. But I did do a spreadsheet. You could take your time, look it over. If you have questions, I can answer them next time or you can email me. But that's in your packet for tonight. I do want to make mention that on October 26th, which is our next open board meeting, we will have some of our principals here, Mrs. Calabrese, Director of Curriculum, and Mr. Alban, who's our Title I Coordinator and does a lot of our data for us. He'll be doing a presentation, which is state mandated, on our spring test scores for grades three to 11. So you know, each year, we have a slideshow. And he'll do the same this year, comparing Cliffside to state averages. And you'll have an opportunity to see some of the scores in all of our elementary schools, middle school, and high school. We also are developing action plans for each of our elementary schools, middle school, and high school to address deficiencies that we still have. And we're working on that plan now. And we'll be sharing it with the board and the public at our October 26th meeting. Also that night, October 26th, I've invited Mrs. Russus. And as you know, School Four was honored by being named a 2022 Blue Ribbon School by the New Jersey Department, I'm sorry, by the United States Department of Education. And I just want to read a letter that we received today from Mr. Delicio, who's our interim county superintendent. Dear Mr. Roman Gino, it gives me great pleasure to offer my sincere congratulations to you, the Cliffside Park Board of Education, the staff, and the students at School Number Four in recognition of the 2022 National Blue Ribbon Award granted by the United States Department of Education. School Number Four is only two Burton County Schools to attain this recognition and one of nine in the state of New Jersey. As you are well aware, being recognized for this award by the United States Department of Ed takes diligence, perseverance, hard work, and strong leadership. On behalf of the Burton County Office of Education, congratulations to the entire Cliffside Park School community on this prestigious honor. So I thank Mr. Delicio for sending us this letter. And again, as I did last time, I want to publicly thank and congratulate Mrs. Russus and her entire staff at School Number Four. They will be here the night of August 26th. We'll present them with a plaque from the board.
October.
I'm sorry, October 26th. Mrs. Russus will outline some events that we are planning for the fall as far as celebrating this great honor. And I met with her yesterday. We have some tentative dates that, once we firm out, firm up, I'll be sharing with the board and she will be sharing with you that night. So that's a great honor for School Four, but the entire district. So I do want to congratulate her again.
I think there are only 200-something in the whole United States that got the award. That got the award.
Yes.
Of all those schools.
It's really a great recognition for the district and for the school. And we should be very proud of that, extremely proud. Okay, at this time, any questions from the public? Okay. So what I would like to do then is, before we look at the consent agenda, any committee reports?
I'll defer to Lou because he knows a lot to be going on, but a lot of progress. Lou?
Thank you, Mr. Capano. There's three major projects. I sent an update out to the board. There's the high school masonry project with the courtyard where we're laying concrete down. That is really moving along at a pace that probably exceeded our expectations. So there's really been some, the high school renovation project, we've got some really good traction over the last week and a half. We're hoping for substantial completion in regards to punchless walk-through on October 5th. Lou's at the high school and number six school. We hope to have again substantial completion when we do our punchless walk-through on October 5th. As the email stated from our facilities manager, Mrs. Spinella, we are going to be taking down the scaffolding at the high school this Friday, September 30th, which will give our high school students and staff access to the gymnasium, which is a little overweighted. So like net-net, the roof project, high school masonry projects, and high school renovation projects. All, we've really got some really good traction. And we'll be doing some walk-throughs and punch-throughs on October 5th with the contractors, all the technical engineering firm, and all the services.
So, Mr. Alfano, is it safe to say for the public that the volleyball team will be able to have spectators?
Once that scaffolding is down, it's safe to say yes.
Thank you.
We still want the fire department inspector to come in. Okay. Confirm once the scaffolding is down. We're trying to clean up the area also. I think they've done a pretty good job of cleaning up the area. Obviously, we want, still got incrementally more to do. Mr. Roman Gino stated, I believe, he moved back to school night on October 13th for the high school. I believe by then, the vast majority of the material will be gone. Like I said, we took a lot on last October, November as a board in the district. And I think if we signed up to where we are today, back then, I think we would have signed up for it. Like I said, we've got some real good traction the last week and a half, or two weeks. And the weather, goodness, has really been positive. So net-net, good news on all three major projects.
Okay. Anyone else? Any questions? Okay, so at this time, what I would like to do is just point out a couple of items on the consent agenda. I believe you have a copy of it in your folder. Page two, as we do each month, we are approving professional development for staff members. We're approving their registration fee, travel expenses. Some of it, as you can see, is still online, but a lot of it is becoming more and more in person as time goes on. A couple of transfers. Kamala Tofano, high school social studies teacher, was transferred to the middle school as a full-time social studies teacher. Wanda Parent, who was filling in in my office for maternity leave, will be transferred to the high school, effective this Monday, October 3rd, and will be a full-time secretary at the high school with Mr. Pinto's staff. A couple of salary classification changes. You know that staff members who, as per contract, move from one category to another, with that is a pay increase. Susanna Pacer is moving from MA 15 to MA 30. We approved most of those last meeting, but this was one that my office missed. So we're just putting Susanna on the list tonight. We're just readjusting her salary at MA 30, step eight. Below that, on page three, we are approving, as per contract with the CPA, graduate reimbursement for this coming school year. So these are all the amounts that have been requested for this coming year. And these staff members, once they show evidence of fulfilling all of the guidelines, such as B average, submitting tuition costs, and so on and so forth, will be approved or will be reimbursed the amount that is indicated on this printout. So each year, we probably get about 20 staff members that take advantage of this. In order to take advantage of it, as per contract, you have to be a tenured staff member, which all of these staff members are. Below that, we have some co-curricular activities that we didn't get a chance to fill at our August meeting. So these are people that have applied for these co-curricular activities. And as per contract, the compensation is listed. Also below that, we are approving some additional coaches for spring sports, assistant coaches in baseball, softball, tennis, track and field. And again, the compensation is as per contract. At the bottom of page five, again, as per contract with the CPA, we are reimbursing staff members who take on a sixth class or staff members that teach in two different certification fields. For example, a math teacher might teach a science class. A social studies teacher might teach a special education class. As per contract, there's an extra $1,000 stipend for the dual certificate, a $5,500 stipend annually for the sixth class. And we're just readjusting salaries for those staff members. That's in the high school, and that's also in the middle school, continued on page six. Bottom of page six, seven, we are adjusting the salaries for our bus drivers. That has to do with recalculating how many days bus drivers work during the school year. We had calculated it on 208 days, but they're actually working 211 days. So we had to recalculate their salaries and, based on the additional three days for the school year. So although it's an hourly position, we calculate an annual salary based on the number of hours they work per day and per week, and then annually. Okay. Then, bottom of page seven, I'm not going to read a lot of these. Page eight, resolutions where we are appointing teacher aides. These are primarily teacher aides who are part of our special education program. As you know, in self-contained classes, depending upon the disability, you may have two aides in a class, three aides in the class. You may have a student that needs a one-to-one aide. And by the end of August, we had filled most positions, but there were still some positions that needed to be filled. We're also appointing some lunch aides who help out with our elementary lunch program in all of our elementary schools. And that's actually continued on pages eight and nine. Again, primarily bus aides, teacher aides, lunch aides. Okay. On page 10, about the fifth resolution down, I just want to approve for Jacqueline Monticarlo, classroom teacher of School Number Four, has submitted a request for four personal days and an unpaid leave from the 26th of September until October 7th. We've granted that. Luisa O'Meyer, who's a classroom teacher aide, is returning from an unpaid leave. Actually, she returned just this past Monday. So that is going to have to be actually adjusted. Could you make note of that, Mr. Alfano? That it's beginning September 19th. It should be through to September 26th.
Okay.
Okay. I think that was just changed on Sunday, so it was probably my mistake that I didn't tell Gia. So we can just update that. The last resolution is we're approving a maternity leave for Joanna Hernandez, who's a teacher aide at number six, effective November 21st. She'll return January 3rd. First resolution, top of page 11. Next Tuesday, or this coming Tuesday, October 4th, will be our first Staff in Service Day of the year. We have a number of activities planned for the staff this coming Tuesday, when we have an agenda, which Mrs. Calabrese will be putting together. I will share that with the board. And we'll talk about some of the activities and programs that the staff took part in in our October meeting. But for now, we're just approving the fact that it's a half-day session for students, full-day session for staff. We are recommending, or we're confirming, the outcome of a bullying incident as per state guidelines. And then Buildings and Grounds on page 12. Again, fundraising, for the most part, rehearsals, things like that, which we do each meeting and every year. That brings me to finance, Mr. Alfano. I don't know if you need to point anything out?
Just a couple of capital projects.
Sure.
We went through the capital projects. On what is not complete, I'll give it according to finalizing that structure plus any findings. There is a resolution in regard to engaging in a new energy contract to pass. Our energy contract has expired in October. We're engaging in this sixteen-month contract for gas slash energy starting in November. And there's also a resolution with regard to our own range facilities plan. We are approving the new range facilities plan, which we need to be renewed for major projects every five years. We'll feedbacks on that from this lead assessment that we're dealing with. Buildings and grass will be on October 12th. Then on October 19th, we're going to go in front of the board. We'll do an overview of what we believe the priority capital projects are. And we'll prioritize, figure out a surplus, and we'll be doing the next spring. Something in regard to capital projects. That's pretty much it.
Okay. Before I ask for a motion to accept, are there any questions from the board or the public on the consent agenda? Motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Vote if I may, Mr. Agro?
Yes.
Mr. Capano?
Yes.
Mr. Persson?
Yes.
Mr. Nidro?
Yes.
Dr. Pacquiao?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Shelly?
Yes, except page four, Kevin Shelly tuition reimbursement, and page six, stipend reimbursement, stipend for Kevin Shelly, page six.
Page four and page six, duly noted. Mr. Shelly, thank you. Mr. Rafferty?
Yes.
Okay. So just a reminder, before I ask to close the meeting, October 26th is our next open meeting. And as I mentioned, Principal Russus will be here with some of her staff members. And also, we will do a presentation of the spring New Jersey student assessment scores at that particular meeting. Motion to close?
Wait, Mr. Roman Gino, I have a few things I'd like to mention.
Sure.
So for the members of the public at home, I want to let everyone know this October 22nd, we will be having a beef steak dinner at the Fire Department, which I encourage you all to attend to. The tickets are on sale now, October 22nd. And...
Excuse me, when you say "we," who's "we"?
Us and the members of the public.
The Board of Education is giving a dinner?
No, 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 we don't have anything to do with that.
That's what I'm saying. Who's giving it?
Yeah, the Fire Department.
Okay, I'm sorry.
The Fire Department is hosting it, and I encourage everyone to attend on the 22nd. Additionally, I'd like to thank some of my colleagues who have seen that event over the past few days. And I'd like to congratulate Jerry Delicio on a very long career. We had his concert on Saturday. Very, very great person. And I also want to let a lot of my colleagues know that over the past few weeks and months, I've been able to speak with a lot of the residents in Fairview and Cliffside and, you know, hear a lot of great things about our... in Fairview and Cliffside and, you know, hear a lot of great things about our district and these suggestions they have. And I specifically come across a lot of members of the Arabic and Islamic communities. And they wanted to bring to my attention that our neighboring city of Fairview has a policy, I believe for some time now, where they have their school days where every year, there's a certain allotted amount of days where school can be closed. They have chosen to recognize Eid as one of those days where in their school district, they have a closure. And the residents have told me to communicate to you guys that they believe as a matter of continuity and keeping in pace with our neighbor, it would be a good idea for us, the next time we put out a school yearly schedule, that we also implement the same policy in relation to you.
Well, that's something that we can discuss when it gets to the point where we develop the calendar for next year. But if any parents have questions or comments, they can call my office directly, speak to a building principal, and work through those channels.
Definitely.
Okay. Anyone else? Motion to close?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Roman Gino. Thank you.